So, any final board review meeting to order? I'd like you to good call the vote, please.
Yes. Alden Keimer.
Here.
Ellen Cornell.
Here.
Keith Kyle.
Here.
Christine Barishu.
Here.
John Ball.
Here.
Christopher Ullman.
Absent with cause.
Anthony Brenetti.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have six members present to the board.
Thank you very much. Any changes that you objected this evening?
Not to my knowledge.
Excellent. Under administrative matters, you all should have received the round ethics financial statements this week in the mail. The requests, if you have them, will be. Please get those in, I think it's April 25th. April 25th. Get those in. Also...
Sorry, what was that, Mr. Chairman? What are they?
The ethics financial reports.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you can file online if you choose to.
Yes.
Just go to call and get a number.
You should. It comes in the mail.
It comes in the...
That number.
Right.
Thank you. Also, you should have received an email from the town clerk about an ethics class that was held on March 11th. If anybody has not attended that, you'll get another letter or email in the next few days. She strongly is encouraging us to attend the online class. Okay? Thank you. Okay, we have all items on the agenda tonight. Five. We'll do the approval of minutes, which we just got to go. So, the approved for minutes of February 20th, 2025, minutes on the agenda.
Second.
And first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Our count is five. Five zero. My first item is Odell. Is Odell here? Yes. This is Platt M., lot 167-81, 25 Shore Road. Mr. Sorden, you're representing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you this evening?
Very well, how are you?
Good. We have a full house, so I will do my best to be brief and get right to the matter, the heart of the matter.
You like that?
Absolutely. As you know, and thank the board for allowing me to continue this matter, this is a... We're coming back before the board regarding this property in Breakwater Village. We are asking for a side yard variance here on our second round. I want to be clear with the board that this is, that there are no changes to the house from the original permit that came before this board. I'm not sure if all we knew were on the board. It was before some of the recent changes in board members. Some of you may remember it, some of you may not. The issue really boils down to a set of stairs versus a concrete landing. And the layout of the house was always been that way. The interior layout, the exterior layout, all of these things have always been the same and are going to continue to be the same. The issue came about, as you can see in some of the site plans, that the pavement of the road actually comes inside of the lot line. And so, as the builder was... And that's not an element that my client or the owners created. That was an element that pre-exists, predates them and is what I would suggest one of the hardships that forced us to be here today and was not something that the applicant created, which is a key element of your decision here tonight. The issue is, as they constructed it, as they dealt with elevations and elevation changes and the encroachment of that roadway, it became impossible to maintain building code requirements with regards to height of steps and entrances and leaving the structure and not being, and having to construct a stair or something to get in and out of that door. And that's what you see here, that if the elevation, if that hardship, if that encroachment, if those things weren't there, would not have been, they had to be constructed because elevations could have been addressed and they could have maintained that one foot about elevation and been co-compliant stepping out of the structure. So, the issue were... So, unfortunately, because of that, they need a staircase to get in and out of this structure that came before you to be approved. We did have the condo association for Breakwater Village here at one point. Their limited objection at this point in time is that they do not want any changes to the structure beyond this staircase and they don't want us to go any closer to the road than this structure. So, those issues have been resolved. I believe they filed a limited objection with you. I don't see Ms. Cavanagh here tonight, and that is our agreement, that we will not go forward, will not ask you, the board, to approve anything where we go any closer to the road. I have some documents, I have some pictures, I have some of the drawings that relate to the prior approval and the prior structure, or for this structure when it came before you, for a coastal overlay variance as well as a dimensional or a request for relief from the Breakwater Village overlay district. As many of you know, Breakwater Village, because of its uniqueness, has its own overlay district that makes the rules there very different than anywhere else in town due to its unique history. I have some handouts, most old fashioned, still like my paper handouts. I'm not sure, I sent some to Ryan later in the day. I'm not sure if they made it on or not. If they did, Ryan's always a rock star, regardless of how, he's always very helpful. So, if I may, I'd ask that these be marked as exhibit A, the package.
Sure.
I have enough for everybody here.
He does.
And what you see, and these are all documents that are from the, with the exception, or actually, are all documents that relate to the first approval that came before you. Because I want to be clear that the applicant, and quite frankly, the builder, but most importantly, the applicant and the homeowner, didn't try to do anything that hadn't been previously approved. Didn't make any changes to the interior of the house, didn't make any changes to the layout of the house, didn't make any changes to the site conditions. We just have to deal with the elevation and the fact that we cannot, we have to maintain three to one about slope and because of the short little band between the edge of the pavement and the structure, you can't get a three to one rise to run slope there as we anticipated when we came before the board previously. So, going through these, you see the first page is the site condition as it sits there today and you see the stair and the walkway and you can see the existing pavement. What I wanted to note on the second document, A201, is you can see the door in the upper left-hand corner on that elevation. It's the same door as you see now in the existing site condition and you would see. And the next document, I highlighted it in pink on the lower left-hand corner, farthest left diagram, that's the same door. And this is the same layout, interior, same structure, same everything, as previously came before you and was approved. And again, my documents just continue to reiterate that. And in fact, you can see on the right-hand side, I highlighted it again, you see where that door is noted in the approved, the building permit and the documents that were submitted to your building efficient. It's the same door, it's the same structure, it's the same... There's no changes ever made. There wasn't a bait and switch. We weren't intending to come before the board and misrepresent anything. The idea here is that the unique site conditions, be it this encroachment of the pavement and the small, undersized lot of record, are one of the hardship that the applicant here has to deal with. And because of those unique conditions, because of the inability to obtain, have the space to create that required slope and building code requirements that mean that anything, I believe it's above one foot, you have to build a stair, you can't just step off out three feet and jam up your back even at my now tender age of 40. That's why we're here today, is to ask for permission from the board to keep this step there that is built as a result of conditions that the, and a hardship that the applicant didn't really have any control over. And I think it's extremely important to stress to the board because I know this board's history and that this board, like, it should, doesn't like when people do something and then come act, ask for permission after the fact, wants to, or forgiveness after the fact, wants us to come and ask permission as is required under the ordinance. And that's why I'm focusing on what was previously approved and why we're back here in that there's really no material change to the interior, to the doorways, to the size of the structure. It's just that the, because of the unique site conditions and that inability to slope it properly and the building code requirements for the height of the door that we ended up with, we have to build a stair. Mr. Odell, the property owner is here as well. I can, I'm happy to answer any questions and then I'll briefly ask him a couple of questions before the board.
So, let's start...
Open to any questions the board may have.
So, let's start with the task you left with a couple of months ago was you were going to try to get to some agreement with Breakwater Village.
And I do. I have that agreement with them and that's what I started with saying, is that you notice they're not here tonight to voice an opinion. They knew about it. Our agreement, we were contemplating entering to a, you know, a formal written agreement. Instead, we left with, "We are not going to go any closer to the road. We are not, at this time, making a claim with regards to the pavement being over the line and outside of the right-of-way." It's not a public right-of-way necessarily because it's a condo association, even though it's open to the public. And then we run into the condo things that I won't belabor before the board. So, we have an acknowledgement and an agreement from them that the application as is presented to you, before you this evening, they have no objection to.
Do we have their approval?
Yeah.
That's really the question.
Yes, yes, we have. I have their permission, their blessing to come forth and ask for this before the board as I'm presenting it here today with these maps and these site conditions.
Yeah, please.
So, I mean, a significant jurisdictional issue was raised by the condo board during this, during this process. It's my understanding that either they, condo association has to sign on to the application or, or, and we don't need that, but we will need the ARC either officially approving it or something being submitted and 60 days has to pass where they do not act, which then there is a deemed approval of it.
I have no objections to either of these.
So, I think, you know, because otherwise you're gonna, if, you know, raising that, that's not, jurisdictional issue's not going to be resolved and I think I'm uncomfortable, you know, acting on it without that, that being resolved.
So, let's... Well, I think two things. Go ahead, when you go first.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, there was an email that was provided that showed that the ARC did in fact approve that.
It did.
Yeah, that is correct.
You had that?
Do we have that?
Stat has it. I don't know if it's in your book.
Is that the one you just handed, just from Linda? Her name's Linda?
I believe so.
Linda Bailey.
Yeah.
Okay. It's kind of a conditional approval. It's not really, and if I, I think I have that, hold on. I think what it says is that they will approve if this board approves. We have a chicken and an egg thing here, you know.
I agree. If you brought that up, some discussion with council last...
Here it is, right here.
Go ahead, you go first.
This email regarding the east side stairs, blah, blah, blah. The ARC recently denied the stairs because they sit in setbacks. However, if the town zoning board approves these stairs, the ARC will have no objection to also approving them. So, I still, we still need that approval.
I have no objection to your approval this evening being conditional on ARC approval or upon 60 days elapsed.
Yeah.
We also had discussions, you missed the last meeting, that the council was going to go up and review that meeting with Ms. Cavanagh, presented her case. Yeah, Mr. Craven here this evening that can tell us something.
All right.
The suggestion that was made by council and yourself, Ellen, would be appropriate mostly to make sure that there wouldn't be a title issue or clouds of some sort. But I think after discussion with council, the jurisdictional issue was somewhat slim and as such, they've abandoned that for the exchange, you know, bargain for exchange of saying that they agree that they will leave these stairs where it is and not raise any issues of their own. So, it's a stalemate, so to speak.
Yeah.
And documentation as a result of that letter, meaning that you folks grant, if you just choose, and that we'll hold that at abeyance until such time as we get the approval minutes or whatever letter from ARC.
Thank you, Craven.
Uh huh.
Any questions?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
I defer to the board if you want to vote now or if you'd like to hear from Mr. Odell.
I don't have much to say. Just thank you very much for considering this issue.
Come on in.
We'll be very grateful, don't worry.
Yeah, I don't have much to say, I just wanted to say...
Will you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and that we got?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Stephen Odell. Oh, apostrophe D E L L.
Thank you.
Let's skip the apostrophe here now. I just wanted to say I don't have much to add, but thank you very much for considering this issue. Obviously, this is kind of longer than we thought over, it's my understaffed issue, but I understand that there is an issue where you're biding too close to the road, so hopefully we can finally get the approval through here.
And Mr. Odell, this issue isn't a result of any, anything that you did, correct? You believe it's a result of the unique conditions of the site?
No, we have no idea that there was any issue with it. Because the elevation where we put the storage in, we ended up having the door look higher and then we went to stairs that meet at that door. There was no consideration at all of those. And it wasn't till we had gone to the CEO that we even realized that the stairs were...
And you're not doing this to raise, to get a greater financial gain with stairs, right? By the time you're done with all of this, it's cost you money, it hasn't been a financial benefit to you.
No, this is definitely not a financial benefit.
And not having these stairs will impact the way you use the property and you're allowed to, and your ability to use it and will be more than a mere inconvenience to your sick of Cavanagh.
Correct. Yes.
That's all I have unless the board has any questions.
That's Mr. Odell?
I don't have a question. I do have a question for Paul. I just still have a question about this jurisdictional issue. That seems to me to not be an issue at all.
I agree.
Or is it? I don't think it's an issue because we've had, I can't even tell you how many applications have come before this board since I've been on it from the Breakwater Village and not once has the Breakwater Village signed an application. It's always been signed by the owner of the condo unit seeking the variance. So, I mean, do we need to address that now or is it just...
I think we ignore it and that you guys right now can vote to approve this or object it on your own. If you voted to approve it, the fact that there was no condition, conditional approval that was suggested in the letter from the condo association wouldn't mean a thing. However, title lawyers are different. They don't want, they want to make sure, especially in a place where the homes, because of the location, are expensive, they want to tie that together. So, if there is a letter that's forthcoming from the condo association saying, conditioned on you guys, we say it's okay. You can say, fine, you can say whatever you want to say, you record that with the document because they probably want to do that. And you're, you are not conceding jurisdiction to the condo association by these actions. And that's exactly what I think you're telling me and you're right.
Yeah, that's what I...
Yeah.
Because I don't think we should concede jurisdiction.
Yes. There is no jurisdiction.
I don't think they're on their own roads and do whatever.
No, I mean, conceding jurisdiction, we have, we're going to say we have jurisdiction.
Right. We're not conceding that they have jurisdiction, we have the jurisdiction.
Yes.
Correct. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Sorden.
I would just request the board grant this application for the reasons we've discussed this evening, that while it is a dimensional request, I believe that it is, there was no ill intent, it wasn't in the fact that it wasn't addressed in the first application. It came about during the course of construction to the unique site conditions and as a result of the unique aspects of this lot, it's not a result of the surrounding community or the surrounding circumstances. Applicant didn't create the hardships, didn't create the topography, didn't create the size of the lot and the encroachment of the roadway, and I believe it meets all the requirements statutorily and evidentiary of your variance statute request that you granted this evening.
Thank you. All right. Have a seat.
Thank you.
This hearing is still open, so we haven't asked for proponents or opponents. So, first, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this project as a proponent? Seeing none, is there any opponents that would like to speak not in favor of this project? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
First and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. What says the board?
Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, with regard to project summary, Odell, tax assessors Platt M., lot 167-81, located at 25 Shore Road in Breakwater Village, I propose the following. Little history here, this is the fourth meeting with this project on the agenda. The last two meetings, I think, required continuances to provide the applicant and the objective with a chance to work out differences. It appears that they have reached some agreement and therefore, and has asked us that we proceed to a, to a decision. The applicant is requesting relief from dimensional regulation section 4.8.1.5 for a two-point three-foot right-side yard setback variance to accommodate a set of stairs that intrudes into that, into that setback. I make a motion that the board accept the following findings of fact for the record. Facts A through E, A through F, in the project summary, I would like to add that, hmm, this is going to be just a... The fact that I wanted to add was that the ARC did not approve the stairs. They approved the original plan, but they did not approve the stairs, but, but we'll take that out and we'll deal with that in a condition, so. In addition, I, we, I think we found that the, that the property is covered by the declaration and rules and regulations of the Breakwater Village Condo Association. Into the findings of fact, I would like to incorporate other information submitted as part of the application, the exhibits and the testimony of Steve Lawrence from Lawrence Builders who spoke for the applicant. In the initial hearing, Mr. Lawrence testified regarding the history of the construction and the approval process as well as the reasons needed for the variance, including, number one, the unique characteristics of Breakwater Village and why granting the variance will not alter the general characteristics of the neighborhood, the reasons that the hardship is not the result of prior actions of the applicant and why the hardship suffered by the applicant is more than a mere inconvenience. There was no testimony regarding the physical or economic disability of the applicant and therefore, we will assume for our set of facts that there is none. Attorney Cavanagh, Attorney Nicole Cavanagh objected to the requested relief on behalf of the Breakwater Village Condo Association. She argued that the hardship was in fact caused by the prior actions of the applicant, but she did not provide any evidence refuting the unique characteristics of Breakwater Village or why the granting of variance will not affect, will not alter the general characteristics of the neighborhood and why the hardship suffered, if relief is not granted, is more than a mere inconvenience. So, we will, we will just, that those are to be adopted into the record. She did, however, raise that jurisdictional objection, which I don't, which I think has been, is going to be resolved in the, in our, my motion for an approval by putting a condition on that. So, those are the findings of facts and I submit them for approval of the board.
And the first, we'll have a second.
Second.
First and a second, properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Hi. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I make a motion that the board approve the relief requested, subject to certain conditions that I will address later. In connection with this motion, we had no evidence to the contrary in this and we did have evidence in support of our findings that Breakwater Village is a very unique, a unique location. We all, you know, we all know that. Roads are slim, properties are small, stairs come right out to the roads half the time. So, so because of those unique characteristics, there is a hardship to the, to the applicant. For those same reasons, the, granting this relief will not adversely affect the neighborhood, will not be against the characteristics of the neighborhood. There was an abundance of testimony submitted to demonstrate that the hardship that will be suffered if the variance is not granted will amount to more than an inconvenience. At the original meeting hearing, Mr. Lawrence testified that the landing stairs cannot be made smaller because any change to them would violate additional zoning requirements. He testified that relocating the front door or the stairs would be a major, a major undertaking in terms of reconstructing and at a major cost to the, to the applicant. And also, in response to questions whether the entrance could be recessed a little by doing, he testified by doing so, we, it would restrict access to another area of the, of the house and the closet and you wouldn't have use of the closet. That's, that's right there. So, I think the biggest area of disagreement is whether the applicant created the hardship, that the hardship was created by the applicant. And I think the testimony, both ways, there was some testimony both ways about the timing of when they discovered that the, there was going to be a need for a variance and, and that the applicant did not, you know, listen to the condo association, asking them to, to change things. But I do think that the more compelling testimony supports that the applicant did not, the actions of the applicant did not create the hardship that, that they need relief from and that especially because of the, I guess, the elevation of the stairs when they finally started building and it really needed a couple stairs instead of one slab. So, it wasn't really, I think the testimony that this was an oversight, also some of the plans, the, there was testimony that the site plan did not have the stairs on it, the constructions plan, plans did, but it was, in constructing the building, they relied on certain plans and it was just some sort of oversight or miscommunication as to what the elevation was needed for the, for the stairs. So, therefore, I make a motion to approve the variance with conditions two through four in the project summary. And I'd like to add an additional condition that we approve, our approval is conditioned upon receipt of evidence that the ARC actually approved the stairs.
Would you like to discuss the favorable recommendations?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would like to point out that the, the planning board, they, they found the application to be complete and they, however, recommended the, the application to the zoning board for the relief to be denied by a vote of five to zero. They, they act, they must, they had, their reason was is that the hardship was created by a prior action of the applicant, but, but the evidence that we have here, I feel that it, it was more compelling that it was not created by the applicant, so.
Thank you. And one last thing, if you just talk about the relief requested, once again, as part of the motion approved.
So...
Thank you.
I make a motion for the, for relief request, as requested in project summary and the relief is relief from the dimensional requirements section 4.8.1.5 for a two-point three-foot from the Dimensional Requirements Section 4.8.1.5 for a 2.3-foot right-side yard setback variance for the construction of the stairs.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Cardo, condition number two can be struck in as well.
Two, okay.
We have three new as-built.
I amend my motion to provide that it's condition three through four. And the condition that the ARC approved the stairs.
Okay, we have a first, and we need a second.
Second.
And first and properly seconded motion to grant relief requested, what says the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board, a good evening.
You too. Okay, next up is project summary for SBN Co. Company Tax Assessor's Platte N.R., Lot 1033, 6 Algonquin Trail, for relief from Section 4.5 High Water Table Limitations Overlay District for 20% site coverage variance, and Section 6.4 B Dimensional Regulations for 0.07 or 352 square feet floor elevation variance, and 17.8 hardscape variance, and a 26% front yard soft skate variance. Sir?
Yes.
You're not an attorney, right?
No.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth, all of the God?
I do.
Please state your name and study your last.
Walter Musto, M-U-S-T-O.
Thank you.
Okay, so SBN Co. is myself and my fiancee are relatively new to real estate, which you will clearly see over the course of my descriptions here. We purchased this property in March of 2023, and we knew we had a long road ahead of us. The person before us who owned it made an addition, he added a deck. He also took on a lot of projects that he didn't finish, and he had no permits or anything like that, didn't ask, and didn't ask forgiveness, didn't ask anything. So, but this was our chance to get a property in Vana, which has been something that we've wanted to do for a long time. So our approach was to partner with the town throughout our process. We had building inspection in right away, both Troya and Wayne, we worked with engineering, and we thought that was the best first approach, is to say, let's make sure everything that he did was structurally sound and passed with the town. Over $200,000 later, we finished all of the projects that he started, included siding the house, he had one bathroom that was a hole, the structures that he did create, we opened up the permits, we made sure that all of the material was up to code and all that, and we got, we were good with engineering and building inspection, and we thought, this is awesome, everything else should go pretty smooth. And I went to the first planning board meeting, thinking that it would be really quick, and as they were reading off all of the requests that we had, I realized how ridiculous that thought was. A lot of good points made by the planning board on why, even though now the building is structurally sound and meets the requirements of engineering and building inspection, it doesn't work for the town. So they allowed us to go back and make some updates to our plan, which we did. That includes things like, yeah, this is, this is the most recent one. I don't know what happens here.
Day.
Oh, there it is. Okay, so the
You have to hold it, bud.
It's like a trick, oh, you hold it, good. Okay, so some of the things that we said we were going to do on the exterior was remove 10 feet of the deck, that both allows for the correct space between the yard behind us and the deck, as well as make some more soft skate, remove the shed, which will add to the soft skate, remove a good amount of the driveway, so all of this area here and here will now be soft skate. And then when we get to the inside, he had, within the original footprint of the house, he had put three basements in the bedroom to make it a five-bedroom rather than a three-bedroom. We are asking to increase to just a four-bedroom. I don't know if we have the picture of the interior, but we're taking down a whole wall on the, yeah, that's it. So we're taking out a whole wall on the first floor to make this a big open area while maintaining the two bedrooms. The main reason for wanting four bedrooms, between my fiancee and I, who are seven co, we have five kids, and this is a place where we live in the summer, we do rent it out to college kids in the school here. So that plan, in conjunction with the board, and confirming that we'll never do anything with the storage area, we won't make it a living area or a room, was favorable to the planning board, and they did approve. So now I'm here, mercy of the zoning board, if you have to ask any questions, I don't know if we need any more information regarding the history or how we got here, truly just trying to get to a point where we're all in agreement that this was a tough situation, we own it, we bought something that someone else did some things to, and we knew we'd have to work hard to get to our approval. I'm hoping that you see that we're at a point now that makes sense.
So to be clear, you bought the property knowing that these conditions existed, but just assumed that we'll take, we'll assume this responsibility and make it right.
Make it right, right. Structurally sound and make the concessions required to appease the town, become compliant.
And visually, it was five, zone, well, it's zoned for three, right? Originally, prior to you, there were five.
Correct.
You were the planning board, you were looking for four, you back and forth with the planning board, you got to agree with them for the four.
For the four, correct.
Okay, there's conditions that are, the leesions you talked about.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Questions from the board? Five, okay. What's on your last name again?
Musto, M-U-S-T-O, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Musto, would you go by having a seat for a moment?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no questions from the board, we'll go right to anyone that would like to speak in favor of the project as a proponent. All right, hearing none or seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak opposed to the project? Also seeing none. And no questions from the board, then the board. So you do behave.
So it's saying a three-bedroom, so on the
Oh, yeah, on the first floor, there are two.
It's a rez ranch, so
Correct.
You have the lower level and then the first floor.
Yeah.
So how's, what's the floor plan on the main level?
I think it's like two pictures back. That's it, yep. Yes, that's correct. And that's the, yeah, that's the original, and we'll be taking 10 feet off of the deck.
Mr. Chairman.
So you want to end with four bedrooms?
Yes.
So two open, two bed?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that was, it was always just a legal three-bedroom, it was never a five-bedroom.
I understand.
This property previously was on a septic system, I think it was a two-bedroom septic. This house had many, many issues, so it's good to see it finally getting cleaned up. But I just wanted to say it was only a three-bedroom.
I guess I was just thrown by G because it says there's parking for a three-bedroom wall.
There, he, the guy before us had gotten to the point where there was almost parking for a five-bedroom. If we reduce the lot, if we reduce the driveway to what it's in, it's pretty much exactly the 800 feet, even square feet for a four-bedroom.
I'm looking, I look forward too many pages.
Yeah, no.
Christine, where's G?
I look forward to maybe just, oh, okay.
Mr. Musto, you've seen the conditions that the board, the staff is recommending?
Yes.
In the project summary, you have a couple of those.
Yes.
Okay, no other questions from the board? Entertaining motion for the public hearing? Anyone?
Close the hearing, too.
We have a second.
Second.
First and properly seconded, made any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, and thank you, thank everybody. It was like, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I still want to thank everybody. It takes a village to raise me, and everybody helps.
Yeah. Chairman, members of the board, with respect to project summary, SBN Co. Tax Assessor's Platte N.R., Lot 1033, located at 6 Algonquin Trail, I would incorporate into the findings of fact the entirety of the project summary, all of the exhibits, including the application filed by Mr. Walter Musto, as well as all of the photographs and other documentation that was submitted as part of the application. In addition, I would incorporate into the findings of fact the testimony of the applicant, Walter Musto, as well as the comments made by, during the hearing, by Mr. Wayne Pimentel, the building official, giving us some background as to this particular property. The applicant is seeking a site coverage variance pursuant to Section 4.5 of the High Water Table Limitations Overlay District, and is seeking three-dimensional regulations pursuant to Section 6.4B specifically a 0.07% floor aerial ratio variance, 17.8% hardscape variance, and a 26% front yard soft skate variance. As part of the application process, this matter appeared before the planning board, which found the application complete and moved to recommend the variances in a three-to-two motion with two conditions, which I'll read into the record. One was that the wall separating the kitchenette and the office shall be removed, and the space shall not be used as an additional bedroom. And the second condition was that the storage space shall not be converted into additional living area or another bedroom. In addition, they recommended it for approval with the seven conditions that are set forth in the project summary. I should put my findings of fact.
Go on, second.
Second.
First and properly seconded, all those in favor of adopting findings of fact? Any?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Chairman, members of the board, with respect to project summary, SBN Company Tax Assessor's Platte N.R., Lot 1033, location at 6 Algonquin Trail, I would make a motion that the two variance requests be made pursuant to Section 4.5 and Section 6.4B be granted. The applicant, through its papers filed with the zoning board, as well as the testimony of Mr. Walter Musto, show that significant effort has been undertaken by the applicant to legalize what was essentially, I guess for the most part, many illegal applications with respect to this particular dwelling. And in particular, he's made significant efforts to reduce the building lot coverage from 31% to 26.1%, he's reduced the site coverage from 55% to 53%, and as I noted, he is really here before us to legalize the prior construction of the rear yard deck, the rear addition, and the unpermitted bedrooms, none of which, by the way, were created by this applicant. He has also indicated that he is removing, pardon me, 10 feet of the deck, removing the shed, and he's also removing a large portion of the driveway, which will, according to the calculations done by the, by staff, result in reducing the hardscape from 60% to 46%, and increasing the soft skate from 24% to 35.6%. Further, the variance from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject's structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and it's not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. The hardship is not the result of any prior action on behalf of this applicant, and the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning board. In fact, it will do just the opposite, it will bring this particular property in conformity with what should be the general character of the surrounding area. So with that in mind, I would move that the variance be granted.
With conditions?
With the conditions one through seven.
We don't need one.
We don't need one, right? So, do we need one?
I would, I would still keep one. There's, yeah, because we, the new plans came in a couple days ago, so staff's still in review of, but those calculations are based off of that type of thing.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, and staff also suggested, I was in conversation with the homeowners, we were informed that there's a wetland just behind the property, and CRMC approval will be contingent upon the zoning board's approval. That just came to our knowledge just a couple days ago, and the homeowners are aware of that.
So, you know, I'll add into my decision or motion for the, to grant the variance that compliance with one through seven, and that due to the wetlands, that there will be requirement of the CRMC CRMC approval, and I think as I, I stated this in the statement of facts, but the, I think also incorporated into the decision is the planning board findings that the wall separating the kitchenette and the office shall be removed, and the space shall not be used as an additional bedroom, and that the storage space shall not be converted into additional living area or another bedroom.
We have a motion on the floor to grant the relief requested from Section 4.5 and 6.4 with conditions one through seven, and the additional two, excuse me, one through eight now, and the additional two. I have a second.
Set up.
All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries five zero. No, you all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next up, Batista, Tax Assessor Platte, N.S., Lot 195, location zero, name Concomode. Now, he's looking for relief from Section 6.4 Dimensional Regulations for a four-foot, four-inch building face variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patrick Hurdie from 887 Boston, that's where he's representing the applicant, John Batista. I'm so happy to announce that we're here on just a simple dimensional height relief, no bar, no other thing, no setback, no lot coverage. We're completely compliant in all respects, with the exception of the height of the structure. Seeking, I could go in and tell you all about it, but just restrict my comments, because I think the staff report did a very good job summarizing the nature of the structures to be built and what relief was being requested. If we were here 14 months ago, or 15 months ago, we wouldn't have to even be here, and but for a single objection that was raised in the modification scenario. And but for a single objection that was raised in the modification scenario, we wouldn't have had to go through this process. We're happy to be here, we're happy to answer any all questions. But I'd just like to, you know, have the board note that we're here seeking something that's perfectly reasonable and something that even the town council is evaluating reverting back to as evidenced by the submitted changes to the zoning boards would revert us back to pre-GEN where we have 2024, when your workload increased dramatically. So I, in order to streamline things, I'd just like to point out a couple of things very quickly. As I said, we're fully conforming in all respects. It's an undersized lot of record, pre-existing, 6,882 square feet in our 20 zone. It's about a third of what is required, but it is an illegal, pre-existing lawful, non-conforming record, a lot of record, man. We do, the objections that were raised, and we're prepared to deal with those for if the butter or the ejector is here with visual evidence as well as some testimony. Now, the two elements that were raised in objection were that a septic system couldn't be put on the property. We have our approval from DDM for the onsite wastewater treatment system. And then also the views would be impaired by the neighboring property owner to the rear. I can tell you that, again, as the board is well aware, a person in the absence of a view easement, there is no basis for denying the relief simply because someone else's view would be hampered or hindered. But I can show you, we're gonna provide you evidence of it's taken in the form of drone photography to show you the contours of the land and also that there won't be any, if anything, it'll be a diminutive searing of the section of the parking lot of Bonnet Shore's Beach Club from the neighboring property. And we do have the evidence and the photographer here for that. So in, in order to streamline things, I'd like to ask our expert Edward Pimentel, who is very familiar with the board to come up here. Ed has presented a written report in keeping with his fastidiousness in addressing each and every element of proof necessary in here. And he also went over, above, and beyond in doing an incredible neighborhood analysis of size, scale, massing of various structures, the years that they were built, what's on site to show you that what is happening here is perfectly in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and is very sensitive to the surrounding property owners as well in terms of the lot coverage setbacks that we're keeping. They could go and encroach a little bit more if they, if they wanted to, but it just wouldn't have been right for the neighbors. In the opinion of the project manager and the owner, who is a longtime resident of Narragansett, a longtime user of Bonnet Shore's area. His family's been here, he's been here his whole life. His family's been here his whole life. And I believe that you will hear testimony from him about what he plans to do with this structure. And I'll leave that for the end for the icing on the cake. But I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Pimentel, unless you have some questions.
Would you like Mr. Pimentel to be sworn in as a expert witness?
Yes, please.
And in what area?
Mr. Pimentel is an expert in planning and also he is a zoning official for the city of East Providence as well. I'd like him to be recognized as an expert not only in planning, but also in zoning. He's a certified planner and he's been recognized by this board countless occasions, as well as every other city in the town.
We are very familiar with Mr. Pimentel, the purposes of this hearing. Mr. Pimentel will be recognized as an expert witness in planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you God?
I do. Edward Pimentel for the record, S.P. as in Paul, I.M.E.N.T.E.L.
Thank you.
So, as is my standard methodology, when we talk about developing a pre-existing prior recorded lot of record, because typically these lots are considerably undersized, is to work in conjunction with the desires of the developer and the architect by doing a neighborhood analysis to make sure that we keep to the massing and scaling factor of the neighborhood. As attorney Doreen had mentioned, the lot is approximately one-third. So I overlay the building envelope on what would have been a compliant lot if we had a 20,000 square foot lot. And if you applied the required width and depth and lot area, resulting would be the size of this lot. So this lot would represent the building envelope if this were a compliant lot. That's how undersized this lot is. But even in such, well, our objective was, was not only to develop a home that would realize reasonable living area and be in character, but also yet not over-constrain a lot because it is substandard. So, for example, and then I applied the neighborhood analysis to the design of this lot. If you go to page 11 of 19, what I did was, we did the design of the home reflecting character, neighborhood. For example, the average footprint in this neighborhood, oh, by the way, I know it's a 20-foot radius, but it never gives you a good sampling, so I do a full block to get a real flavor of what the neighborhood's like. So the average footprint, for example, is 16, 90, odds of approximately 1,000, right? The average building coverage is in excess of 19. We kept it to around 14 and a half. We did this so we can maintain as much green space and reduce drainage and runoff because we have a substandard lot. But even so stating that, this neighborhood is pretty substandard. It's an R20 district, over 98% of this neighborhood doesn't comply with the R20. And in fact, 40% of this neighborhood matches our lot sizes even smaller. So this massing and scale that I did, our homes that are to the same scale, but are similar substandard lots. So it's not like we're trying to achieve something that somebody else has, but they can accommodate on a larger lot. But that is not the character of this neighborhood. So that's what we utilized to design this, and yet we made sure that we maintained that average of what typically was permitted, the 35 feet. And the reason why that wasn't one is because we could have accomplished two things. Either could sprawl the home out more across the building envelope, which would have increased drainage and reduced green space, and then had more of a sandwich-looking house. But we wanted to also maintain the architectural integrity of what the roof pitches on the neighborhood. And so when you look at the home, the average of the height of this house comes out to 34 and a third approximately. And under section, like I said, 6.4, it is a 30-foot maximum now, so we're looking at that, we're looking for that 4.3, 3-foot variance in height. So, having said all of that, I would contend that the hardship results from uniqueness of this property. It is considerably substandard. But it's actually the unique features that help the development of it. Because it's a sloping topography or in a fishbowl, we're able to achieve that height and yet keep it below the line of sight of the other homes, as can be testified to further. So the hardship results from unique characteristics of the property, reducing what we can accommodate on it, but we're yet still trying to maintain reasonable living area and in character of the neighborhood, which I believe we've accomplished through the neighborhood analysis. Your comprehensive plan speaks to the appropriateness of these infill lots. I've got quotes in my report. Obviously, these unique features associated with this lot are not the result of this property owner. This has been a well-established private lot for many, many years. And as for the mere inconvenience, I would argue that forced compliance, I think you end up with a product that is out of character with the neighborhood and would impact the lot even more, in my professional, in my humble opinion. Anybody has any questions?
Good question, more.
And I believe both the neighborhood analysis and the report and my resume are in the record.
Now, Mr. Pimentel, can you just point out for us, because it's not apparent from looking at this, which direction is this property sloping down?
It slopes, it slopes from north to south. So this, this up here is a higher elevation than homes above.
And we have photographs given, it's kind of good things to have.
And the, and the other thing we did in situating this within the building envelope was also to align it with the homes so that the homes themselves could have. So we didn't try to push this forward or somewhere to, so we tried to position in accordance with the surrounding residents as well.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to ask him just a couple more eyes and proceeds. Mr. Pimentel, you mentioned that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Are you, is the relief from which, or the hardship from which the applicant is seeking relief not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant?
No.
Right. Is the hardship the result of any prior action on the part of the applicant?
No, this is a well-established lot that was well-planned before the adoption of zoning regulations.
And is it your testimony, I just wanna make sure that there's an affirmative statement in the record on this, that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of this surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning board to the comprehensive plan of the town of Narragansett upon which the zoning board is based?
That is correct. That's probably where I spent like 95% of my energy in working with the design team was to figure out what is the massing, scale, character of this neighborhood in designing this home and in positioning it on the property.
And dovetailing it towards that analysis, is it your testimony of the hardship that will be suffered by the owner if the variance is not granted amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that the relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted?
Yes, and I would also contend that to accomplish what we want, if we had to be forced to be below that 30-foot limit, I think would be out of character with the neighborhood. I think would have more consequential impact on the lot itself because we would have to broaden the home, and it just looks so out of character.
And one final thing, Mr. Pimentel, is it, is your analysis and your testimony here today and the basis for requesting relief, is it, is it at all based upon the fact that this use of the land would be more profitable, that the structure would be more valuable after the relief is granted as a basis for the means seeking this relief?
No, anything you do, any improvement you do to this property is gonna make it more profitable. But the end intent goal was to, because we're entitled to put a single family residence in there, but the goal is how can we accomplish that accommodating the many constraints associated with the lot and yet making sure that it is a home when you're driving by that says, yep, that home is perfectly fitting with the variety of architectures and massing and scales in this neighborhood, as evidenced by the fact, because I've been to the property several times at different times of the day, different dates of the week, just to get a flavor, and the amount of construction going on there is incredible. All sort in that same venue, that three-story kind of same architecture, and that's what we tried to accommodate.
Thank you. I have nothing further than Mr. Pimentel, if the board can ask any questions.
Take a fact out, thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Justin St. Ange. Mr. St. Ange is the project manager and the orange representative, representing him during what we hope will be the construction. Mr. St. Ange, please walk here.
It's actually St. Andre.
St. An, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I get St. Ange since I was a kindergarten.
I'm so sorry, I know Justin St. Ange from Connecticut as well, and I'm so sorry.
I get that more than I get the correct pronunciation.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you God?
I do.
Please state your name and say your last.
Justin St. Andre, S.T. period capital A.N.D.R.E.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. St. Andre, will you forgive me for macerating your name on that other one?
That's fine.
Thank you. All right, Mr. St. Andre, were you involved in the, in the project from its inception in terms of its design, placement, and architectural?
Absolutely.
All right, could you tell us what elements factored into the decision to come across with this sort of a design and site layout?
So, Mr. Batista is a very good friend of mine, very close. He came to me when he wanted to build his home. And we looked at the lot, and obviously, he lives on, in the Shore Club on Algonquin, which is right up the road. We went over there a few times, we looked at it. We recognized it's definitely a very small lot, has an interesting shape. It's kind of like a parallelogram of sorts and it's, you know, the building envelope with the setbacks, it's small, right? It's tough. John has two daughters. He has a grandchild due in August. He just had a grandchild last year. His daughters are in out of state in the summer. They're here all the time, so it's two of them, two children, their significant others, his significant other. We wanted a home to accommodate all of them, but we were limited on our footprints of maintaining 15-foot setbacks on each side, 30 feet off the curb on each side. It was, it was tricky without needing a couple of extra feet.
And as far as the setbacks and the placement, did that, did the concerns of the impact of this development on the surrounding neighbors come into play?
Absolutely, we took that into consideration. We went around the neighborhood. The one thing that he did want was, he wanted to make sure he builds a house that has an ocean look, blends in with the neighborhood, shingles, nice looking, you know, some viewing areas.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach, we have a couple of pictures of them. Let me go first.
We'll do, do, do this one first. So these are from a drone we popped up over the summer.
Oh, you have no intent of telling us. Scorty points of view, Mr. Paul, I'm like.
I'm not going to tell, that's okay. So I'm looking at this photo.
And could we also have this marked as exhibit, I believe, one? Now, Mr. St. Andre, could you, or did you take these photos?
I did.
And how did you take these photographs?
With a drone.
Okay. When were these taken?
These were taken over the summer.
Okay, all right, very good. So go ahead, please tell us what the first exhibit one shows.
So what you're seeing here is the home that I have on this photo that has a deck that circles. That, that home sits about right here, okay? So the beach club would be down here, here's the ocean, that home sits right here. Okay, there it is. So there's a nice, beautiful deck, right, viewing area, yeah, okay? The way we have this house set back, obviously, it's 30 feet from the street on this corner. It's a little angle here, so the viewing that you get from this deck, where this house is gonna sit, I don't see any impact for a view. Mind you, they have ocean here, 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 here. Over here, if they were to look across through his house, they'd be watching somebody unload their chairs in the parking lot of Bonnet. All the beach, all here, there's, there's no visual impact from this neighbor. And I'm pointing out that neighbor because that is the letter that was received when the director of others were mailed, and their objection was that my view is gonna be obstructed. I don't believe it's gonna be obstructed. Whether it's a protected right or not is not my argument, but from my, and when I have the drone up, we're looking at it from the eyes of the drone. View seemed fine all around, I didn't see any impact to any view. And we took this into consideration well before we even applied for a permit. We were conscious of that. We said, we wanna build a home that's gonna fit in, and we don't wanna make anybody mad. And we did what we could, and, you know, it's 34 and a half, well, 34 and a third feet, give or take.
34.4, 34 feet, four inches, 34.33333, ad nauseam on that.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm a 11-man foot road.
Manna, you'll have a chance to speak when we get, okay?
Okay, just, never mind.
All right, and would you like to discuss what is exhibit, may we have this marked as exhibit two, please?
No, that's.
No, I was holding up.
Yep.
Exhibit two.
That should gonna be three.
Three?
Oh, oh, it is two.
Yeah, okay. I never am gonna correct the board, remember? Okay, and then this other photo is, you know, it's from the other direction. It's basically that, that drone was up here, shooting this way. And, you know, you can see the scope of view that that house will have from this deck, which would be right here. It's situated higher, the whole slope of the land, it's not just, you know, back to front, it's also side to side. So that house naturally sits a little higher, as it is. I really don't see that they're gonna have, and, you know, in my opinion, from what I saw in that drone, I don't see an obstructive view of any, I think we did what we could to work with the land we have, not encroach on a setback, keep our FAR well below minimum, I mean, you know, well within the minimum requirements of FAR. And we did what we could.
And again, the primary basis for making these considerations, or taking these into consideration was to ensure that you did not negatively impact the surrounding property.
Absolutely, we didn't want something to stand out, let's just sort of, we wanted this house to fit in, we wanted it to look really nice, match the community. It's not an overwhelmingly wide or long house. It's gonna look great in the envelope that it sits on that lot, and I think we did what we could.
Does anyone have any questions on Mr. St. Andre?
There's a question, so why would you have an unfinished room on the top?
So, that is his man cave, which is basically gonna be like a Florida room, give or take. When his grandkids are in town, his daughters, their husband, and they're all running around screaming, and he wants to go take a nap, that's where he's gonna go. go. So, that's, those right there are just like a slider. He's just going to sit there and he, at the Shore Club where he lives now, he spends most of his time on his balcony and on his deck. He likes the open air and being out. So, we, speaking with Wayne, you know, we tossed around the possible of like a rooftop deck, just a flat, the look, in our opinion, in my opinion, and what he was looking at is in terms of aesthetics, if we were just to have a straight, flat deck with a railing around, I think it looks a little nicer. Making it look like the slope of a roof, it's all boxed in, some nice standing seam touches, some finishes, it looks really nice. There'll never be heat up there, there'll never be AC up there. It's just a seasonal space that he can go, fireworks, a bonnet. It's more of an enclosed viewing area. It's not really a-
And I might add that initially, there was a question raised by staff about the mechanicals who were up there in the vent, and those are going down. They are not going up and out in any way, shape, or form. They are not, there are no returns and portion of structure.
That's just a furnace for central air for the floor below. That's what I do. I'm an HVAC guy. I, we didn't want to put the units all the way down and shoot cold air up to the third floor. Architect looked at it and said, we could put your heater here, do you mind? I said, I don't really mind. That's for below level. The returns and the supplies are going to shoot down and they'll go through the rafters on the level below that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to see if I'm reading something correctly. What did you say what the height of the building was?
The average height of the four corners is thirty-four feet, four inches, I believe.
And is that what you take into account, the average height of the four corners?
Yes.
Okay.
That was per Mr. Pimental.
Okay, because there's a portion of the building that is thirty-eight?
Yes.
Foot?
That's correct. That goes with the opinions that were submitted to Mr. Pimental. We got our denial letter. That was all factored into it. We're not trying to slip something in.
Yeah, the back of the property is a little higher, the grade of the land, so there's going to be some retaining walls. And I will also add that I believe that the engineer that we hired, Casali Engineering, that the environmental drainage report that you did is extensive. We're going to have two big rain gardens, dry well. We went really overboard making sure that we did everything we could in terms of soft skate, handling all that engineering, handling all that runoff water. I mean, we did a lot to make sure we didn't have anything here that was out of compliance.
And when you were taking our steps to make sure you could handle the runoff of rainwater and so on and so forth, you took that into consideration in making the structure a little bit higher rather than wider?
Rather than, oh, yeah, absolutely. That would spend more FAR, more hardscape and to make sure there was never an issue of any water. We went well overboard with the engineering for the stone church watch.
Any further questions?
And I'd just like to have, introduce the board to my client, Mr. John Batista. Mr. Batista, would you like to have a few words with the-
No.
Let me just ask you one question. Is the-
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Aye.
Please state your name and spell your last.
John Batista, B.A.T.T.I.S.T.A.
Thank you.
Mr. Batista, let me just ask you one question out of the box here. With regard to the structure that you're proposing and the relief that you're requesting here, is it any way at all based upon a desire to seek a more valuable or a more profitable use or structure of the property?
No, because I'm not selling it. So, it's mine and it's staying mine. And then when I go, it's passed on to my dogs. So, there's not, there's no intention to sell it. Or rent. No intentions to rent. I own in the Shore Club condo and I'm building this to move there. If I wanted to rent, I'd move there and I'd rent the condo. The condo's being sold, so that's not happening. And I'm also not building a house with an elevator in it for people to use and to rent. That elevator is for me, if ever comes the need that I needed and for anyone else. So, those are factors that I take in, in this whole structure and the way it's being built. And I'd like to answer your question, it's okay this. That rooftop, when it was discussed, possibility of a flat roof, by railings, height and everything, that would be open. It isn't actually a deck. You have furniture, umbrellas. The risk is there. Bad weather, in the wintertime, that's a flat roof, rain, and now I'd have extra furniture, everything that could store. That being enclosed, is going to be all enclosed with hurricane windows, sliders, and that also now protects the roof, any furniture or trying to find a place for it. So, that was the main reason, if I was able to do the roof, was to secure it so that it was one solid structure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. Batista.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Hey. Have you finished the presentations? Is anyone who would like to speak as an opponent?
Oh.
Excuse me, as a proponent, someone who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there any, are there any opponents? Someone who would like to speak, not in favor of this project?
I'm just trying to clarify-
You need to come up with this one, please.
Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Yes. Please state your name and spell your last. Ann Fogarty, F.O.G.A.R.T.Y. I live at eleven Nam Cook. Thank you. And I just want to clarify the whole height issue.
Please.
So, the total height is going to be?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four point, thirty-four feet, four inches.
Okay.
Up until January of last year, you could probably write, build a structure up to thirty-five feet. So, we're actually seeking something a half a foot lower of what was previously allowed, no coordinate coordinates, coordinate changes, and what is being contemplated to be put back into these levels. So, it's not going any higher. It's actually a half a foot, eight inches lower than what it was then.
Okay, yeah. And before you leave, can I see some pictures of what?
Oh, sure.
Allah, the proposed house of the-
Yeah, we like it. We'd be happy to.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there any other, are there any opponents?
Did you get your question answered or did you want to say something? No, I'll deal with him later. As for Steve. Okay.
Deal with him now.
No, we're never, right?
Okay, if there's no other questions, the testimony required.
That concludes the word, finally, being addressed, Mr. Chairman.
And I would like to take a motion to both the public here.
So.
And first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Motion carries five zero. So, this is a voice pleasure.
I'd like to submit the findings of fact. The applicant is John Batista and he's looking for relief from section four, I mean, six point four, which is a four-foot, four-inch height variance. The location is zero Nipmuck Road, which is flat NS lot 495. The owner is John Batista and the board accepts the following facts for the record, which is project summary included, March 12, 2025. And we'd like to have findings of fact of the proposed improvements and the letters A through H. And then the following findings.
You don't need to read that. You can just conduct all the other documents and try to send it to the other side.
Okay, so, okay, I think I've said that. So, then the supplemental findings that we had, where we had Attorney Patrick Torardi representing the owner, and also we had Edward Pimental that came as an expert planning and zoning, and we have his report and neighborhood analysis. And then we also had Justin Andre, who is the project manager, who explained the project and also gave the exhibits of the drone photos and future exhibits. And then we also had John Batista, who also spoke. We had no one else in favor speaking and we had Manifogarty that came up just wanting to see some of the photos of the project. So, based on the following evidence, which is part of the record, the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief-
Oh, that's fine.
-is due to the characteristics of the subject land and or structure and not, I'm Not the general characteristics of the surrounding areas and is not physical or technological instability of the applicant. And then the hardship is not a result of any action prior to the applicant. And we don't believe it'll alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area. And that the hardship that the owner will suffer is not, if it's not granted, will amount to more than inconvenience.
That's based on the testimony from the-
Yes.
-from the Williams Court, not to much like that.
Okay, and that's based on the testimony given by Patrick?
Yes, Mr. Pimental.
Okay, from Edward Pimental and-
Yeah.
-it's spoken, is that the person?
Nobody is there.
Okay, great. So, I think that's it.
We want to talk to the board.
Yeah. And then we'd also like to say that the planning board accepted this and they had two stipulations. And we'd like to recognize that two stipulations noted that the den located on the first floor not be used as an additional bedroom and that the fourth floor remain unconditioned and not converted into additional bedroom. And that they thought it was complete in conformance and that it was recommended for approval five to zero. And that's, that concludes my findings of fact.
I have a first, I have a motion identifying the findings of fact and requesting adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have first and promptly second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a variance from section six point four for a four-foot, four-inch height variance. And-
Subject to conditions.
Subject to the conditions of from the, for the conditions of one through six. And also would like to have the conditions from the planning board submitted. That's it.
I have a motion. I have motion of the board to accept, to grant relief requested from section six point four for a four-foot, four-inch building height variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have first, then promptly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is Rotella, flat S, lot 51, 29 Burnside Avenue, looking for relief from, one second.
A branch.
From section six point four, dimensional regulations for a three-point-four, two-foot front yard setback areas, a four-foot, six-inch building height variance, and a point three, point zero-three, or two hundred, two-hundred-and-one square foot, four area ratio variance. Who is representing?
Navy. My name is Anthony J. Gucci Junior. I represent Kenneth DeGrom, Rotella. Regrettably, they cannot be here today because they had pre-scheduled vacation plans. However, Mr. Rotella previously testified before the planning board that the proposed expansion of this house was solely for his own and his family's use and not for rental purposes. The Rotella's lot is a very restrictive, legally non-performing, substandard lot of sixty-seven hundred thirty square feet and currently there's a modest house on it going eleven hundred fifty-two square feet. This constrained footprint loses their ability to enjoy the home and have the functional home. Modest dimensional relief, all of which falls within the fifteen percent allowance, but for the fact that we were brought here because there were three objections and the standard one object that withdrew, formally withdrew their objection. So, due to the restrictive nature of the lot, the only way to expand the house was really to go up vertically. The planning staff supports this proposal, noting its consistency with the land use component of the comprehensive plan and confirming that the renovation will not disrupt the neighborhood's general character. And just to provide context, the house that you see to the left of S-50, lot S-50, which is thirty-three Burnside, they're the ones that withdrew their objection, but that's a seven-bedroom, thirty-five-hundred-square-foot home that is thirty-nine and a half feet high. The house, I think it's S-70, best I could tell, but it's twenty-five Burnside. To the right is twenty-four hundred square feet and certainly higher than ours. So, by comparison, the proposed renovation is modest, aligning with the scaling character of the neighborhood. The requested variance is a minor in scope, ensuring renovated residents will seamlessly integrate into the neighborhood. So, I could call our planning expert, Joe Lombardo.
Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I will.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Sure. Joseph, last name Lombardo, L-O-M-B-A-R-D-O.
Thank you.
If I am handing you the document, could you tell us what that is? Can you tell us what that is?
That's like my reservation.
That's definitely not business equivalent. We could not prefile that or the report's prefiled.
Can you briefly describe your experience qualifications as a planner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, of course. A pleasure to be back and answer this evening. I have a master's degree in community planning at the University of Rhode Island. I've been a town planner in Westerly, Richmond, Hockeaton, and also work in Groton in Connecticut. Past 25 or 30 years, I've been doing land use planning consulting, which also were, been working with some communities, on comprehensive plans, zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and also representing builders and clients like this in front of boards and commissions for any type of variances or, well, plan approval.
Would you like Mr. Lombardo to recognize that as an expert in planning?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you like Mr. Lombardo to recognize that as an expert? For purposes of this hearing, Mr. Lombardo recognizes an expert in planning.
Thank you, Chairman.
You familiar with the dimensional relief requested in the surrounding area?
Yes, we just, we just described the three variances that are being requested. As you described, Bucci was a result of a modification request that because of the objection triggered the variance process that we hear in front of you to do to approve them versus the zoning enforcement.
And you submitted a report in preparation for the next hearing?
Yes, I did.
And that was prefiled by me?
Yes, it was.
And you just went through the report and?
Yes, I will. Thank you. And I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman, and realize probably have read it. But again, just to hit some of the highlights. We identified those requests and variances in the report. We mentioned that the zoning district is the R-10 district, which is called High Density Residential, in the zoning ordinance. I also specify some of the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, which I think is important that you look at. You know, the main goal is to make decisions based on the environment, based on the conditions, and based on some planning principles. The fact that you, you know, send these applications before your planning board for them to review it and then offer their opinions to you, that helps with that, that goal. The other, the other ones that I mentioned here talks about neighborhood character and design, because that is, that is very important in these neighborhoods. When you drive up and down Burnside and go into some of the other roads, you just got to get a pretty good sense for what, what the neighborhood is like. You have smaller homes that are older, and you have larger homes that have taken the place of those and have built up over time. And it's, it's a continuing process that we see in a lot of the coastal areas. I live in the Cove Row area in Westerly, it's the same, same exact thing. But my, my, my opinion here is that this renovated residence will need the recommendations for character in design. Decisions by the zoning board ensure that these renovated residences are keeping the general size and scale of the neighborhood. This variance request, as Mr. Bucci pointed out to you, are minor in scope in size and will fit into this existing neighborhood. Now, I also talked a little bit more about housing goals, promoting high-quality, energy-efficient residential designs. It's kind of like an infill project that's already there, but you're renovating it and adding it on. So it's, it's an infill expansion. And also, when you take a look at, when this occurs, these new properties will have, meet all new building codes. They meet more energy efficient, put in the new, there's better glass, there's better roof shingles. So it really, really meets these housing goals as well. When you look at the future land use plan, again, it talks about residential high to moderate density in these areas. This R-10 zone is that reflection in the zoning ordinance. But many of the lots in this area, as you know, legal nonconformance. So it often triggers some type of variance or modifications to just to be able to fit these homes where they're situated. I did put an aerial photograph in my report, it's similar to what you've been looking at. And as you drive the neighborhood, not just Burnside, as you go down a couple of the other roads, you're going to see the same pattern repeating. So what I did is I did a small chart in my, in my report, it's on page six. I did pick these lots, looking at both them on Google Maps and also site visits of the properties, mostly to try to get a sense for the size of the lot and the size of the homes that are on it to see how consistent, you know, the new residents will be with it. And as you can see, the average sizes of these nine homes was on .16 acres with a size of 2,338 square feet. The proposed residence for the Rotellas is on .155 acres and it's 2,220 square feet. So it's basically in line with all of these homes that you'll see in the neighborhood that are similar size and scale. And also, the other important fact in my opinion here, it talks about the floor area ratio. It's right in line with all of those properties, right around that .33. So again, it's, it's in keeping with that, that standard. We look at the purposes of zoning, and I highlight several of those on page seven. The characteristics of the land, the ability to accommodate this property with its expanded footprint, the availability and capacity of, of public services for this lot, for this house, once it's, it's rebuilt. And also for protection, this is important, for the protection and abatement of air water, groundwater, and noise pollution, so, or, and sanitation. And lastly, promoting a high level of quality in design. Again, that's, that's what you get when you have a renovated home. You have the ability to follow all of those perception standards. I'm just going to hit several of the dimensional variant standards, just to give you my opinions on those, it's in the report. But when it talks about the unique characteristics of this subject property, two important facts come to light. First, it is a lot of record, and it's 6,730 square feet. It contains less than the minimum of 10,000 square feet required in its own. Secondly, the shape of the lot, being rectangular, it's 54 feet wide and 122 feet deep. So when you have these kinds of shaped lots, it makes it difficult to put a home in that either looks aesthetically pleasing or can fit within the setbacks. So in this case, they're using the rear property where they have 122 feet for the addition. So really, those, those small modifications and variances being requested just to get a little more height. Some of that is related to the architecture of the home, so you have the roof lines and the pitches matched to homes that you had in the area. So again, it's my opinion, it's the unique shape of the slot that has preexisted that drives, drives that variance effect. And then, the second one that's been important is the general character of the surrounding area. I think I've already spoken about that. And again, in my opinion, looking at those properties that I identified on page six of my report, and going down both Burnside Avenue and Tassano Drive, you can see these larger homes on these smaller lots. And my opinion is it will not alter the general character of the surrounding area and keeping with the pattern of this present neighborhood and the size and scale of the homes in the neighborhood. So in summary, you have those standards, you have ability to, to grant these variances that would normally have fallen under the modification. And as I understand, the council's considering keeping that back to the old standard. But today, you would need to have this relief granted to this property. I believe it meets the neighborhood and character design that talked about the comprehensive plan. It supports the residential infill and expansion that's sensitive to its surroundings. And lastly, it's my opinion that it will not alter the general character of the surrounding area because it's in keeping with all the pattern, size, and scale. And I think that the intensity and the size of it fits in perfectly with the neighborhood. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has, or Mr. Bucci has any follow-up.
Questions in the board?
I have just a few myself.
You, please.
Will the grant given requested variances impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan?
No, it will not. I, I think I've listed in both, in both bases in my report about how it meets the purposes of zoning and the several, you know, major components of the comprehensive plan, both land use and housing, that it will meet.
And the variances are not, not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant?
Absolutely not.
And the hardship points the applicant seeks relief is not the result of any prior action of the applicant?
No prior action of the applicant, of the existing house as you see it.
And will the hardship suffered by the owner of the property if the dimensional variances are not granted amounts more than American convenience?
I believe that it would. When you look at the surrounding homes in the neighborhood, the, the land use there and the intended use as a single-family home, what this allows them to do is to use it as a single-family home. They've indicated it's not a rental. And I think that's the only way that they can, they can enjoy that use is to, to renovate and expand it.
Questions in the board?
Okay, thank you.
Question now called?
Yes, give it to him.
William Coyle?
Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to the hobby gods?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
William E. Coyle, C-O-Y-L-E, III.
Thank you.
Can you briefly state your experience or qualifications as a real estate expert, an appraiser?
I am a real estate appraiser and consultant. I have done for almost 50 years now. I hate to say that every time I say that. However, I've been, testified before all 39 cities and towns for zoning purposes. I've testified in state court, municipal courts, district courts, and federal courts. I hold certified general appraiser category in the state of Rhode Island, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I also hold national designations in the world of appraising, including the MAI, SRVA, and SRA designations. And I have some qualifications, and I've testified before many occasions, I think last month.
Is this a copy of your CV?
Yeah, it is a copy.
Ask that this be marked as an exhibit.
And you familiar with the dimensional relief requested in the surrounding area?
Would you like her to be recognized as an expert?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you like her to be recognized? The purposes of this, this hearing, Mr. Coyle, recognized as an expert in real estate and appraisal.
Thank you.
So are you familiar with the dimensional variant requested in the surrounding area?
Yes, I've read all of the testimony of the previous fitnesses and reviewed the submissions that have been made and probably viewed the subject location personally and reviewed the subject neighborhoods.
And in preparation of the season, as you prepare, we thought?
I did.
And that was prefiled, clear?
I believe it was, but I haven't.
How, can you briefly read through your report?
Yeah, well, basically, I looked at the property, looked at the changes. And as was mentioned, the dimensional relief that they're asking for are very minimal. From the previous sketch that was up there, you can see that the currently existing building, the side yard setbacks, front yard, rear yard, were already currently existing. So any changes to the being proposed on the next, you can see the boundaries all, also formed in the same parameters that were applied previously. But as with most of these infill plots, this house is dramatically out of character to what is being put in and around it. And very typical to most of these that are especially along Burnside because of the openness of the parking lot across the street. All of the houses that have been currently expanded, even right and left of it, are all basically identical to the same proposals that they're dealing with here. Any further expansions are limited for this particular building because of the slope and the geography goes down to the rear. There's about, I think, about a six-foot elevation change based on the plans. And so going back further makes it more difficult. It means you're going to have to have cantileverions or increased basements. It, so trying to stay close to the front and therefore going up is obviously some of the better ways. And as has even testified in the last hearing, the same problem when you get to the top, you don't want to get flat roofs because flat roofs just generally cause far more difficulty, especially when it's close to the ocean. And so having gables is the way to go for basically the operation of the building. And so that minor elevation change in height that was within the parameters except for the conditions that were mentioned previously would not be any way out of character for this. Currently, this building looks like the poor chutzpah next to the other stuff. This is just, has, something has to happen here, whatever. And I think that this would be generally in character and would have absolutely no impact or cause no diminution of the value of the surrounding properties. About somebody in the board, do you want one?
I just ask you some very specific questions.
You may.
Will the grant given the question vary from part of the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan?
It will not.
Well, the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject property and not due to the general characteristic of the surrounding neighborhood?
As I mentioned, because of the higher dimension than the pre-existing building, I believe.
And it's not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant?
No, I don't think that suggests.
And it's not due to any prior action of the applicant?
No, the building was pre-existing and it just played off of it.
And will the failure to grant the relief amount to more than American convenience?
Yes, again, for that minor difference with the height elevation would be, yes, would absolutely be more than American convenience.
That's all I have, but I would like to reserve the right to rebuttal. And I don't know if it's necessary, but if it is, I'd like to ask that both of their reports be admitted in full along with their CVs.
Thank you. Okay, can you bring the question to the board if they move on? Yes?
I have a question. So just, just confirming some things. You're going from a three-bedroom to a four-bedroom?
Yes.
And is the property sewered? It's on sewer?
Oh, it is.
Okay. And so you're going from a two-bedroom to a five-bedroom? Is that?
No, I don't think so.
Am I making, I'm seeing something wrong. Four and a half?
Yeah, two and a half on the ground.
Four and a half, that's? But with sewer, there's no concerns with that?
No, the sewers wouldn't matter, but just to clarify that also, it has, unlike the houses that I grew up in, as you do, it is becoming more and more apparent that virtually every bedroom has to have a bathroom or things just don't work well anymore, apparently. But I've been able to make it, my house now is only two, but my, my children all have at least four. So it's, and every house I deal with on a regular basis and the houses that I see on a regular basis, everything is being built. Four-bedroom houses, four, four-unit houses. Just recently, I dealt with five four-unit houses with 28 bedrooms and 28 bathrooms. So it's like bathrooms are not a special thing anymore, but, so I'm not surprised that in any way.
So in one of the previous applications, a board member made it subject to all the conditions in the planning report. And I would just ask, I don't really care if you do that except for the last one. I just really don't know, the availability of alternatives to the proposed project. Well, we want approval of the project. So the staff report, number 16.
Number 16, did you say?
Yeah, the staff, private summary.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe, are you referencing the planning board guidelines? So those aren't conditions to the application. Those are just standards and guidelines the planning board would use where they were given.
Thank you.
You're ours. Five conditions for that stuff. Figures, none, nothing.
No, those shouldn't be in the report.
Okay. And you're completely testimony, but you've reserved it, I understand, okay? At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this project as a proponent? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak as a proponent? What time, what time?
Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Sure, Daniel Lamendola, L A M E N D O L A.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
All right, hi, my name's Dan Lamendola. My partner owns the property on Seven Middle Road, which is Lot 52, which is a budding property. So the rear of this property abuts the side of ours, so perfect, so this house here.
There's a point you're on, this one, right?
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, so this nice small summer cottage, we have a border here that abuts toward these houses into here. Here, you know, top level, objecting to the requests here for variances, and it goes through a few different areas. Principally, we look at it just the fact of, you know, some of the discussions around the character and the fit and the neighborhood. I could like hear the audible gasp when they mentioned the size of this house, right? Seven bedrooms, this thirty-something, it's huge, right? It's one of these things that came in, six pieces on a truck, they stacked it together, brought two more pieces and built the roof, right? That's not the character of this neighborhood, I mean, unless we're in like East Providence, not the character. So we start, you know, thinking of, okay, maybe we draw a comparison here. I didn't get a chance to review the report that the other gentleman referenced, you know, page six had houses on defleet, right? Property over here. Again, what are those? They're like the massive East Providence double-decker homes, right? You take a walk down Middle Road, brand-new house built here, our property and others, all nice, small, summer cottages designed, you know, some, yes, they're used for rentals, but also used there. So I would just ask you to have a little bit of caution when reviewing that report and the selectivity of the properties that were chosen. You know, first you wonder, how did this even get through? But that's a question for another day. The point is, how do we avoid having another issue like this be built next door? Again, speaking top-level character then further, what are these houses? What's the intent? What's the purpose? I grew up, I'm one of eight kids, ten people, we had a bedroom, we had one shower in the house. We have a property here for, every room, every bedroom has an en suite, so we're going from a three to a four. And I'm going to call it straight out here. We're told that this property is not going to be used for a rental. We've gone in the home, lived in the home for years, never once have we met the individuals here. Was, you know, regrettably, they're not here tonight, it's a surprise, it's like, who are these people that are living here that are now going to call this home? They need a home with massive bathrooms on every level. They need a height variance, and we say it's not because, you know, it'd be more than an inconvenience, an incon, a cathedral ceiling? Because that's effectively the design, conveniently not shown here, but if you look at it, it's a cathedral ceiling to get that extra height. And I'll put it out here too. Everybody that's come up here has said reconsidering, the town council's reconsidering going back to the height, that doesn't matter. They might reconsider, they might not, I mean, we look at what the town council does, they pass rental ordinances that don't even get enforced. So to sit up here and say, oh, well, we want the four feet becau, please. Three months ago, years ago, you changed the number, that's the number, you had plenty of time to configure that. But I'll go back to this point about, is this going to be a home that somebody's living in? Or is it going to be another rental, another issue? We know the issues in town, we know how that looks. It killed me here, we have experts. The house is dramatically out of character presently. Why is it dramatically out of character? We have a six-hundred-foot square foot home, beautifully appointed, do what we can with it. Why is this one dramatically out of character? Because it's poorly maintained. Garbage outside, wasn't even landscaped this summer. There's, to date, drainage pipes upside down, wheelbarrows, the house isn't disrepaired, the porch was ripped down, carbon monoxide detector goes off for days on end, who do you call? Oh, who do you call? You call the rental, sorry, the property manager for the rental. The house has been stickered with renters, we've had renters come over and pee in the backyard. And again, we say, okay, he says, the owner, again, wish I knew who he was, what he looked like, this is where I am going to live. That's what he says to us all, right? I am not going to rent this property. It's interesting because if you happen to go and, let me have a second here. I have photos of the property with some of the disrepair if you're interested, but we'll get to that in a second. Where did I put it? One more. Do you have the, did I get that? Oh, here it is, perfect, okay. So on multiple occasions, the homeowners for this property have taken out a mortgage for the home. In each time, the mortgage is, is Sarah Chanford, that's her time. I'm just trying to save.
No, one's going to speak one at a time.
It's just entirely irrelevant to these proceedings, so I object.
So I'm going to give a little more leeway, but I mean, meaning your way, yes. Your way has nothing to do with this area.
The mortgage, it absolutely has to do with it.
Sir?
The mortgage has a second home rider. The mortgage says they are not going to rent the property, the property's been rented for years.
Well, this has nothing to do with this.
Well, can I ask a question?
Why don't you hear me first?
Sure.
What you're describing are conditions that has nothing to do with the variance that are being requested here. They're trying to build the character of the house of the owners and the neighborhood. I personally don't care. What matters is, are they, why they're actively looking for these variances? If you have reasons why they shouldn't be looking for these variances that are strictly building requirements, I'll talk, I'll hear that.
Okay, testimony was put into the record by the first individual here, saying at the planning board, he gave his word that this was not to be a rental.
I appreciate that as well. We're not here to talk about rentals or ownership. If it's a rental problem, goes to the building.
And I'm saying, when we decide to look at the character of a property, we should consider if it's being constructed in such a way that it fits with the character of the neighborhood. Meaning, is the need for cathedral ceilings, the need for an extension in the back?
Have you seen the inside of the home? Have you seen the, the plan that's showing?
Yes.
And you see a good, an actual cathedral ceiling in the ground, you can tell from the plans?
I think so, yeah, and the second, do you pull plans up?
I don't want to do that, okay?
Well, we shared the information, please.
Yeah, so the interior elevation, yeah, right here. It's not a three-story building, so, right, that's a, it's an open space, there's a, they had a drawing with some chairs, so you look out to see the view of the parking lot, et cetera. So like, that's, that's the top, oh, I should use the pointer, sorry. That's the top, and then you have the extended peak. So we're looking for another three to four feet aesthetically, I don't think it's a hardship to get rid of a cathedral ceiling. So there's one point for you.
Thank you.
Okay? Again, hard to, hard to take somebody at their word for what a property's going to be and what the use is when you see evidence of the contrary. So I'll go through some other points here. So what's, so another big problem we have has to do with drainage and water mitigation. So again, not an expert here, right? If you were to look at the property maps here, it's in a moment.
Again, I don't want to be a pain, what I'm going to object, it's irrelevant. The house was rebuilt in accordance with all requirements.
Could I have objected when he spoke?
Actually, neither of you can really object.
Yeah, so that's why I'm just trying to get some clarification, he can't object, can he?
You want us to up here?
I don't, no.
Good, then let me run this a little bit, we're going to run this, okay?
Well, it says it's run by Robert's Rules of Order, he didn't have the right to the floor, and he's interrupted me three times, so what's the outcome?
Continue with your.
Okay, so when we look at the property area here, right, our, I don't know if you have it up there, but our lot is zoned in one of the District A overlays, which as you are sure well aware, one of the high-water table limitation areas. That area, right, it's defined where the eighteen inches or less of the water table. And in the report they filed, they have one that says that the water table report that they provided was eight inches, right? So we're talking a narrow area here where, you know, squiggly line where we are, where they are.
Where are you going with this?
So what I'm going is, in a twenty, in a District A overlay, the coverage percent reduces to twenty-two percent, right? And we're talking an area here where their own report basically says, you know, the town says twenty-five feet away, you've got a District A overlay. Their own report says it's eight, and if you pull the other picture up we had earlier, it literally says there's standing water, right? So standing water in this area, and the remedy for this standing water is a four-foot, sorry, a four, yeah, eight-inch by four-foot kind of swale and beer to solve this water problem. And the report actually goes on to say that with the extension of a roof line, so they're putting up more roof, more hardscape, more extensions back, right? That it's going to reduce the amount of water output into the property. So I would just like to be able to share with you a few photos, water's an issue here, right? Why is water an issue? Because it's a massive seven-story building, terrible water retention. And, you know, you go down the list. So if I could provide you with some photos just so you can get a sense of the water issue. So as you look at considerations for extending the roof, adding more hardscape, reducing stuff, what that impact, you know, just the present condition today, so I didn't bring copies for everybody, but those are our property, and then you'll be able to see on the outside effects where some of that water goes. So again, I just, while we're at it, again, to refute the other expert that says the problem with the property is a result of, you know, the small size. The reason it doesn't fit the characters of the neighborhood today is because it's not well kept.
So you brought one single, you brought one of multiple pictures, right? They're all different pictures.
They're all different pictures, but they get to the general sense. So what I'm trying to share with you is, water is a serious concern here for the property. Their own records show that they're, you know, eight inches of water depth, which would put them in an R-22, which would get you to a twenty-two, or an R-10, whatever the thing is, twenty-two percent. So I'm not convinced that their report on water is accurate, I don't have the expertise to do that. I would suggest it'd be something you look at and consider with your expertise.
So neither are we, we have staff that looks at that. If they've gone through it, if you'd like to speak to it, you're welcome to.
Sure, if you look at condition E, the town engineering department did review this project, and I believe they, yeah, they approved it with, as it relates to Section 7.7, which addresses our water.
Yeah, with a small, you know, hundred sixty-four square foot container for water.
Expert, testimony, expert reports.
Yeah, you consider it, just like we have a seven-story, you know, I mean, seven-building next to us. What expert went up that, right? So now we just want to talk a little bit about kind of hardscape and softscape, it was just, it struck me, right? So the, the design for the driveway here. It's a four-bedroom house now, right, three to four, means have the eight-hundred square foot. Their picture for the driveway, it only fits three cars. Now I know there's the eight-hundred square feet and kind of how they angle them in there, but even when you are.
You're off track, we're not even asking for relief for any hardscape or softscape.
Well, so that's, that's going to get, where I'm going with it is, I'm just curious where the softscape is.
Can I ask you for relief for it?
I know they're not asking for relief, I'm asking, where's the softscape in the front yard? Maybe we could ask the expert.
I don't review softscape, I would defer to the building officials.
Who reviews softscape?
Yeah, I don't, I'll, I'll talk on behalf of the staff members, I might have found that a few of this, but there was no change in the softscape, it's an existing building, so there was no change in it, therefore, there's, there's no need to address it.
So the letter we got said you were looking to bring the porch out further and reduce and reconfigure the driveway. Maybe that changed?
Um, I don't know if I could, if I really have a question formulated yet, but I did, I do want to, if you see the pictures, I did have questions. I like what they said, there's only room for three cars, and it doesn't, I don't know where the fourth went. But I took staff's, yeah, staff said there's room, so, I mean, the report, staff.
Yeah, and that's what I say, yeah, you can probably fit the four cars, because I did some rough math, it looked like we used like nine-hundred square feet, but it's kind of an L and tucked in there. But I said, with all of that, where's the softscape? Doesn't look like there's some softscape there. And, and they're changing that configuration from how it presently sits, right? So that introduced a question for me. Height, we go back to the height, just a couple other points here, right? We mentioned the other houses and the roof lines and all these other comments. Please just go and look at the surrounding houses, not just the big houses. Please look at the other houses which are well suited for this. If I can go back to some of the stipulations, right? So in their report, it talked about stipulations for maintenance of the drainage beer and those other things. Again, I would just say, the maintenance on this property in the seven years we've been there, poor, miserable, not even mowed throughout the year. So when we see an obligation for owners to have to maintain it and have to do things, I just have a hard time taking that one on faith, right? Because what's ultimately going to happen is, we approve another massive house in order of our property, and we get more water. So at the expense of, you know, these hardships and all the rest, so they can have a cathedral ceiling, extended porch out in the back, all this other stuff. You know, everybody likes water from property, not, not like you see in the pictures we have. So multiple houses have been built, and we continue to have an increased water problem. So again, I don't know who's responsible for reviewing that water plan and that water assessment. The pictures show it, their own plans show standing water. I find, and their expert report says bigger roofs, extended porches, more hardscape. So magically, there's going to be less water on the property. Don't know how that works, but again, not an expert. Couple of last points, taking up a bit of your time here. Narrative, trying to define what kind of character aesthetic design is that's both a physical thing, it's also kind of the neighborhood characteristic, right? Who we are as people, what we're trying to do and enjoy with these. Like I said, find it a real hard time to believe that this house is going to be maintained and appointed that fits the character of the neighborhood. For that reason, we have rules. We have setbacks, we have pipe restrictions, we have floor area ratios. Forget what the council may do, those are what they are. We should try and stick to them. If we're not going to stick to them, we could save everybody a whole lot of time. Stick to the regulations, yes, it's a tight line, no surprise there. Six-hundred-square-foot home, perfect, great, great little spot, you don't need massive homes, you don't need en suite bathrooms, and you can't call that a hardship. You just, so with that, I will, I guess I'll step back here. I did want to provide you one last photo, because I realized it was in the picture. But, you know, just back to current state of affairs, where things are at, the care for the property. And like I said, maybe I could reserve time for rebuttal as well, thank you.
One question, Mr. Lamendola, thank you. Did you attend the planning board meeting for this project?
No, we weren't aware that it was, that it was happening, so that was a challenge for us. And we didn't get an opportunity to review the two reports that were submitted, so, you know, we would be pleased to do that. We didn't, on a related topic, trying to navigate the town's ordinances, I'm sure you can agree, is a nightmare. The municipal website has not been updated since 2023, and there are over thirty-eight ordinances that aren't there.
You are way off topic.
So to expect me.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to sit down if you don't stop.
Okay. I was just going to say, to expect me to navigate the procedures for these hearings, to be able to get that stuff, I'm just telling you, is a tall task.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll reserve time for rebuttal.
I'm sorry, you don't get time for rebuttal.
Can we have any, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Put you in a second, we see if any other, a board?
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Please just state your name and spell your last.
Sure, Evan Pagano, P A G A, N O.
Thank you.
And I had a few notes, but I'm going to just keep it pretty realistic to, going back to the variance of the floor plan ratio and just the overall size of the house. It indirectly relates back to a drainage issue, which I know you said has been worked through, but I do implore you to visit that yard. I, I own that lot directly to the north. There, there's standing water there every time of the year. And by increasing the size of this yard, or increasing the size of the house, you're going to end up with, with more water. And I know there's a plan, I just, it's, it's, it's not. So they, they did a similar, um, um, well, you, you have all the photos of water, and it's, they're, they're captured year-round. I try not to get just spring, summer, winter, but it's all the time. And again, by increasing the, the size of this house, there's just going to be an incredible amount of water in that backyard, and it's going to continue to spill into my yard, so. Again, I, I know that there are remediations in, in the plans, but I just, based on the neighboring house, both neighboring houses, which are actually going to be small, it just doesn't, that both have existing water issues to this day. I don't see how that's going to actually work. It sounds good on paper, but I don't, I don't see it. So, I, um, let's see. That was what my, my objection letter, when I first reached out, that's what it, it never, and I get that that wasn't part of the variance, but I implore you to visit that lot at any point. You're, you're going to see several inches of water. And it's not a puddle. It's, it's a large patch of water. So, with that, like, the house is an eyesore, and I do appreciate them trying to make efforts to improve the house. It's not just me. My parents have a house that's probably, it's just out of the picture. But they've been there for thirty-five years. We've never interacted with the owners before. We've never seen them. It has just been a rental, but I'm, I'm new to this, this whole forum here, but I don't know if there's anything else we could do with the, the water issue, but again, that house is an eyesore. I'm glad that, that something's going to happen, or at least it's starting to, to take shape. And I want nothing more than for it to be cleaned up. I just don't think that this plan is, is like the golden ticket, just based on size. Two wrongs don't make the right. Like, we, we mentioned this house is seven bedrooms, five bathrooms. This one here is, I don't know how many bedrooms, but it's another tall house, but I didn't have a chance to see the report. But again, I don't think just because it's sandwiched between these two big houses that, oh, that gives the green light to also, like, build a skyscraper. Mr. Bucci mentioned that there's only space to go vertically, but you're actually, you're going back twelve feet plus an additional eight on the house. So again, it speaks to the size of the house. And just again, where's this water going? It's going into my yard.
I'll leave you in that photo.
Just a good question?
Yeah, Mr. Pagano, Mr. Pagano, could you just point out on that where your house is situated, so we can understand that?
Sure. I don't know where that pointer is, but this is me.
The water?
The water, um, so they all, they could use this. Thanks.
Yeah, do that photo, Ted.
This is just another one to pass around, but again, shows the water. So, this is me. And then, the housing question we have here. You can actually see it, it's dark. This is all water here, and it's there all the time. And so, I know you did a study. I don't know if they vacuumed it up beforehand. That water's always there. And I built a little berm right here on my property. I had my property surveying, and I built a berm. This water pours right over it. It's about a foot tall. And this, the water extends the whole, like, and even goes into this guy's yard. And, again, if they want to build a house, again, this house is ugly right now. I love, I look at it all the time. I've got a beautiful garden right here, and I look and I see their house, and I'm like, ah, they need to paint it something, do something. So I'd love that they're taking action, but I just, it's, um, if, if you're swimming, I'm roughly estimating, you're building this house all the way back, all of this water, it's it, it's not going to be collected in the little sweat over, it's just, on paper, things sound good. We can have this conversation when it's built. It's, it's going to be a tool. It's already a pond. And so, the plans showed standing water, and, and it wasn't mentioned at all. But, that's huge. I mean, it brings mosquitoes all summer long. And that's, that's my main concern is water. But, yeah, sorry, that was a long answer.
Oh, that answer, thank you. I just, I just didn't realize that was the whole backyard.
This is the soils matter. But, yeah, any other questions?
Appreciate that. Anyone else I would like to speak to, ask them over here, both opponents.
Please raise your hand. Do you sound misread that the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Please state your name and spell your last.
Joseph Pagano, P-A-G-A-N-O.
Thank you.
And I'm on the lot next to Evan. I just had a quick question. When they're going to put this house up, are they going to raise the, the soil at all?
I can't answer the question until you have an answer.
Nobody knows if they're going to build the yard up higher.
I just heard yes.
Turn it down.
Heard a yes.
There's, there's many, many yards.
Sir, sir, sir. You cannot speak if you are. Mr. Bucci, if you are, you're welcome to.
I'm just saying, building that, if you build it up six inches, I don't know how high the plan went going, but it's, it's the same thing. It's just a water issue. The town years ago put drains in my backyard, in my son's backyard for the water. It helped a little bit, only six-inch pipes. It's supposed to run until runoff that goes, and that is out on Scarborough Beach. It doesn't help. Just, the, the water's always there. You can't go out at night on your deck because the mosquitoes carry you away. There's just so many mosquitoes out of breath. You just breathe on that water constantly. And it's not like it's this deep. It's, I mean, I had pictures years ago, when they first put Eastwood Look in, that I'm wearing waders in my backyard, and I'm up to my waist in water. But that was years ago. That doesn't matter to this. I'm just wondering how high they're going to come up with that lot. It's just going to push the water into my yard. It's just my yard, my son's yard, the neighbors', everybody's. That's my question.
Could you point out, Mr. Pagano, your, your lot on-
You can't see it. It's just right next door to, is there a point?
You're welcome to.
Hey, this is my son's lot, and this will be mine over here. I have a house over here. But this whole back here is just, just water. So I just don't want more water.
Thank you. What else?
How high they going with that? You don't know? You don't want to tell me?
Guys, we're in the middle of a hearing here. No other opponents? Mr. Bucci. Last words.
Thank you. I would just like to say that ninety-nine percent of what you heard is completely thoroughly irrelevant to these proceedings. Seems to be the largest claim, although Mr. Lamendola had a couple of other complaints, it seems the largest complaint is water. There's going to be an approved mitigation, an approved drainage plan to mitigate the water issue. And then, Mr. Lamendola complains that the property's not well-kept, but then, yet he's here to object to the property, in return of improved the property, and change it from a rental to a personal-use property where it will be there. So, none of it's irrelevant, and I'd point out that despite them testifying about water and drainage issues, neither of them are engineers, architects, or any other kind of expert that would qualify them to give any kind of meaningful testimony in that regard. Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Bucci, did you bring any testimonies of soils or what the, what the soils are like? Do you have any experts that you brought forward?
I do not, because I don't, you have necessarily a zoning issue. We're going to have all-approved plans. And that would be something that would be considered when the building gets issued.
You're done?
Have a moment for rebuttal?
You don't, you've not got rebuttal? Council, this, do they get rebuttal? They do? They do, or you do not?
They don't, they, he's not entitled.
Thank you.
He's replying to the testimony they were giving.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Otherwise, we would never, the tennis match would never be over.
Yeah, exactly. Wayne, did you have something you wanted to add?
I should have objected when he spoke then.
Jill, did you want to?
Yeah, I think jointly, we want to just comment upon the, the issue with the high-water table.
Sure.
And the, um,
No, so with the high-water table, we wanted to take a look at, we wanted to go back and look at the building review form, talk to the building inspector, who actually worked on the project, Mr. Alden, and look at it in comparison to see if it's actually within the high-water table limitations overly district, which, which I didn't see in the report, but it could have been on the building review form, and I just missed it. And so, in that case, we'd like to be able to, if the board is inclined, to give us the staff a moment.
I think, I think we are.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Well, I think there are a couple of things you'd like to do as well, but yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the other, Jill?
Yes.
The other, I, I, and, and I was going to make a motion to, I guess, would, would be just, maybe you could correct it, probably just adjourn this proceeding and not close it, because I would like to hear the applicants in this case, because one of the things they are seeking is this height variance, and I think it is relevant if, why do they need a cathedral ceiling? And why, why can't they comply with the height variance and the like? So, I, I would like to just hear from the applicant, because there's been a lot of objections asserted, and I think we should- So you would then motion to adjourn for a month, or whatever you feel is those appropriate, and leave the public hearing open? Leave it open?
Yes, so continue to a date certain.
Yes, whatever the next- Quiet, no.
I, I have, go ahead, go ahead. I have a question about, I'm back to parking. So, um, right now, there's, oops.
Do you want the existing?
Yeah, I think. So, parking is here, right? And that's enough for three right now?
I believe so.
Okay. And there's softscape here.
Yes.
So to add a fourth, you're going to have to go here, right?
Could go along the left side as well. They could go further back.
They could go further back here. Okay. Do you know what the plans are? You know where the proposed driveway is in the plans? I didn't, I didn't see any-
I didn't see it.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
So I think as part of this, we will ask for an updated site plan showing eight hundred square feet on a survey plan.
Right, okay.
And we'll also confirm the softscape.
All right. And I'm, you know, and I fully understand that, you know, the owners might want to be converting this from a, from a rental to a, you know, permanent home or a, or a owner-occupied residence. I, I do get that. But, I mean, you know, we all worry a little bit about this area when it comes to, you know, student rentals and things like that. So I, I, again, I, I think I echo he wants to hear from the owners.
And also, it's so close to the driving by. I thought it started construction. Because of the way it was being maintained, I was just like, did they start construction? But also too, is if it's going to have four bedrooms, and, you know, you want to make sure there's not parking, because that house is kind of close to-
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you. We can't hear you.
So, I know, it just seems like that house is close to the street, so, yeah, glad you're looking into the parking, that's all.
They will confirm those for the next phase.
And then, is there a way to get, usually when we look at these, we see what's there, and then they kind of put like a sketch of what they want, so you can see the difference? And I do see that on one piece of each-
There's a site plan that shows-
It was one of the slides that showed.
Yeah, so this, you can actually see that this is the existing deck, and this is the proposed deck. So they're actually going to be less impacted on the front yard than presently.
And so what about the back?
With the back, they're moving the deck to the back.
Could you explain it to me? So that's what's there now, and that's?
No, no.
So could you, if you understand that, so then can you show me what is existing and what is proposed for the backyard?
This is the existing, and we're bringing it in from the side yard.
You have to hold it.
You have to hold it.
Hold it?
The red way. Turn it around.
So you propose addition line?
So the addition goes over the existing deck?
Right.
And then they're going to put another deck off the back of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, in fact, on the plan, you can see again, proposed deck line, proposed deck line is the proposed building. But the building line, it's within this facility as the part.
Mr. Bucci, can you show me where the additional parking's going to go on this, on that?
The, all the parking, yeah.
Is that existing?
I think that's the proposed, it says proposed, I believe it is.
No, that's existing, they said. So there's only room for three right now, but now you're adding a bedroom, so where's the fourth?
I think it's based on square footage, not based on parking.
Got it, but. You'll look at parking.
Everybody comfortable? Any more questions?
So, if they were to, if they were to make this, uh, kind of question part of the official. So, I'm kind of curious about if it's kind of wet in that area, and somebody was bringing up, do they bring in soil to make it higher? Or what do they do, what happens in the building?
Yeah, I mean, they have to do some type of retaining wall, that, and that would fall under a separate ordinance, that, that would have to be off the property line, the height of that retaining wall. I mean, we wouldn't permit, there's, we saw no plan that showed any areas of fill proposed for this. So, we're, our understanding is that it's going to remain as is. The addition, the addition of the structures, then we take care of with the new snowwater calculations and rain garden. But we've seen nothing that says that they're filling in the back of this property.
And so, Mr. Show, so Section 7.7 of our ordinance also says that any development, you can't create any new net run, you can't create new runoff. So whatever falls under law, stays under law. You know, if it ran off before, but you can't, you can't create additional runoff. So if fill and retain wall were to go in, the engineer certainly would have commented on that. He would have looked at that and made sure that the plan is appropriate before he ever got to, to planning.
Thank you.
I believe we submitted a plan to the building inspector originally, from Narragansett.
On what? On, on the sawwater?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we did get that report.
Yes.
Yes, we do have that. The engineer did review it and approve it.
Right, we got that point a while ago.
Yes.
I just, I'm not sure, can you, maybe you can confirm. I couldn't confirm. It's based on fill?
I don't believe so, but we'll take a look at that, and we'll report that for the next meeting.
Yeah, they're also all serious, so.
Yes, you'll check.
Okay. Yes, you may.
I'd, I'd make a motion that we adjourn this hearing.
Continue, Mr. Kyle?
Well, adjourn and continue to the next. And I say adjourn because it would remain open, because I would like to, at least I, I don't know if other members, I'd like to hear from the applicants, or at one of the applicants, the owners, as to what their intended use of the property is, and why they think this is a hardship for them. So I'd like to move to adjourn this hearing and continue it to the next day. That will allow an opportunity for the applicants to come back from their vacation, hopefully, or if Mr. Bucci thinks we need two months, I, I don't know when they're returning, and then time for Jill and Wayne to do whatever additional work you feel is necessary to.
Yeah, some of this information, we're going to have to rely on the client and their surveyor, perhaps their engineer, to get some of his data, so we'll work with you if we need to push it forward.
Should we go to May? The April date is the twenty-fourth, and the May date is the twenty-second of May. So, those are the two choices, because they're already scheduled zoning board matters, and we have to continue it to a date certain in order to keep the notice to the public, which would receive it once you make a decision right now.
I would obviously prefer the closest date, so April.
Yes, please. April twenty-fourth.
Ryan, Mr. Stevens, put that, would like, who's April meeting, please?
Uh, it should be, okay.
Okay. Okay.
Is that reasonable for you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start working on this tomorrow. We'll communicate with the applicant on what we're going to need from them as far as data goes. And we'll work on the rest of it ourselves, but we'll hopefully get this done by the twenty-fourth.
My apologies, there will be several zoning board applications upwards to six that will be on the agenda in April.
Yes, six, all right, April. Did he go to May?
May twenty-second.
Did he go to May?
Well, you know, that interferes with any plans to construct and, you know, get done in a meaningful period of time, so I-
We understand that. We have six hearings on that night. We had four tonight, and we're ready at nine o'clock. Just saying. Would, and May looks much better, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Theoretically.
Well, yeah.
Probably would be number one in May, right?
Yeah, he's in line now for May, number one.
So I've moved to adjourn uh and continue this hearing until the May-
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
At first, I'll have a second.
Second.
On this favor.
Aye.
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 motion carries by zero. No reporting staff, we're good?
Yes, I've I've never seen, I don't see you. Yeah, so I think we're-
Okay. Okay, move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
First and second. Everybody.
Aye.
A lot of people say it.